Hi, I'm Michael. I'm a small business owner. I'm an investor. I'm an improv artist. I'm very, very neurotic and I'm always looking for something new and interesting to entertain me. I'm a TV host and I'm your host right now for what we call the Second Scene Podcast. It's a Dweeb's Global Production where we offer free resume help, mental health assistance, you name it. We have mentors from around the world and it's completely free. Dweeb'sglobal.org. Free, I swear it's free. So anyone we have, we have, we have help standing by. Today, I am, this is gonna be a great episode. For anyone looking to work in politics or simply trying to understand how it works, because I am here with someone that I have great respect for. His name is David Harrington. David spent the first half of his career representing the people. First as the mayor of Bladensburg, Maryland, then county council member for Prince George's County, Maryland, and finally a state senator for Maryland. David is now the CEO of the Prince George's County Chamber of Commerce, which in some ways is very opposite from, from the politics work you did, at least from an outsider point of view. For those that are not familiar, Prince George's County, it borders Washington DC and is the largest and one of the most affluent African American majority counties in America. So, welcome, David. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Glad to be here.
Yeah, so we've, we go way back. We've known each other for-
Oh wow. I'll say at least nine years. Cause I've been at the chamber for about nine years and you were there when I first came on board.
Yeah, that's right. I was there before you.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
That's funny. Well, you were, you were born and raised in Prince George's County?
No, no, I was born and raised in New York City.
Oh.
Yeah, and I came to the DC area, probably about nineteen seventy-four thereabouts, because I, I came here to attend Howard University.
Okay, and you never went back to New York?
I never went, yeah, I had some summer, but, but yeah, after I graduated from Howard, I just decided to stay here. In fact, one of the signs that you've made it, from your parents' view and from several New Yorkers, is that you were able to move out of New York. So yeah, from the eyes, I was a successful kid, right?
Isn't the rest of the world, if you make it to New York and you make it in New York, then you've succeeded?
Except if you were born and raised there, then it's like, okay, so all right, you know, see, see if you can make it outside of New York, right?
You know, I lived in New York for 10 years, so I-
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I loved it. I never thought I was gonna leave. I thought I was there for good. I went-
Yeah, I miss it. I miss it in many ways. The food, the atmosphere, the, you know, just being in the city. Like, I love shows that just show New York, right? Because like, oh yeah, I know that. I know that. You know, I tell my wife that every time. I say, oh yeah, I know Vigo Park. I know, so, yeah.
So you moved down to Prince George's County. You went to Maryland and Howard University?
No, I went to Howard.
Okay.
And then I stayed in the area, but I did a brief stint. I got my masters at Miami University of Ohio and did work in, in, in public policy there. Then I came back here and have been here ever since.
Did you always know you wanted to get into politics?
No, I really didn't. I've always liked politics, but I never thought about, you know, running for office until we moved to Bladensburg. And there were things that were just happening there that I just thought, you know, I tried to be a, you know, tried to be an active citizen, but I thought that that wasn't enough. That wasn't gonna bring about the change I thought was needed in the town. And so, silly me, I decided to run for mayor of Bladensburg and I won by a whopping margin of two votes.
How many votes were there?
There was like over, I'm close to eight hundred and I forgot the exact count, but I thought I won it hands down. And then, you know, they announced the count and it was only a two vote margin. And I thought for sure there was gonna be a recount or runoff or something, but I ran against incumbent and, you know, the next day she just packed the bags and left. So, yeah.
That's why I can't imagine not, I mean, that seems like the right time for, for a recount. I've seen a lot of people go for recounts recently.
No, I just assumed it was gonna be a recount and, you know, because they were hand ballots, so it wasn't machines. It was just, you know, they counted by hand and, you know. And I was wondering why it was taking so long. Like, it was really taking a long, long time to announce the winner and then figure out why it was just two votes.
It sounded like she didn't really want the job.
Yeah, I suspect. I think I did her a favor, actually.
So what, what was going on in the community that you really wanted to, to change or be a part of?
Um, you know, there really wasn't, you know, the town was shifting, like, and, and most of Prince George's County is around nineteen ninety-five. And so Prince George's County was seeing a demographic shift from many people in Washington DC and particularly African Americans and other people of color were moving into Prince George's County, because you can get this amazing house that you couldn't get in Washington DC. And so there was a middle-class movement into Prince George's County and, and including places like Bladensburg. I got a wonderful home, you know, Bladensburg. And, but the, but the town council and the town, the, the infrastructure of town didn't represent the demographic shift. And so when I tried to make ovations of, hey, you know, we should, we should do something about this, you know, I was just rebuffed frankly. And I said, okay, well, the only way it's gonna be changed is a vibe run. And the other reason why I ran, I had young children, very, you know, like, my kids who are now grown were, were babies and I used to love taking them to the town park, right? And the town, and they just, it was just dilapidated. It was filthy. And the, the times I would go to the town and say, look, you know, can you clean up this park? And again, you say, well, we'll get to, we'll get to it. And I just thought, let me just throw my hat in the ring and see if I can make some change.
Right. That always seems to be a problem in areas that I've seen is, is people won't change, but if you look around and there's trash on the ground and it's just not treated right, it's, uh, it's hard for the changes to happen around it.
Yeah.
Get to the core.
No, I think, I think that's absolutely right. You know, that's why Bladensburg had such promise. But when, you know, you ride around Bladensburg and there's trash or the park looks messy and it's, you know, just people didn't seem like they cared. You know, it's hard to sort of then convince investors and other businesses to come into the town if in fact the town doesn't care for itself.
Right, right. What was, what was it like running for mayor? What did you have to do? What did that entail?
Yeah, a lot of door knocking, you know, going out to the community, introducing myself, you know, because I, while I was somewhat active in the town, I certainly was not as well-known as the incumbent and her, you know, her, her team, if you will. And so it was a lot of wearing a shoe leather, you know, doing mailings, getting out, getting out literature in the town. You know, because when you run in a, in a small town, that, that, you know, it's about relationships and it's about building those relationships. And that's, that's what I did and we were able to win. And I carried that on. Yeah, I didn't stop. You know, to me, when you run for office, you never stop campaigning, right? You just, you're always in campaign mode. You don't say, okay, I won, I could, you know. And so I used to have a column in our, our town newsletter where I wrote to people and people responded to that. I used to say, hey, the mayor's gonna be in your street at such and such a time. If your, if your door is open or your light is on, I'll come by. And that resonated with people.
I should, that's a, you know, people, people have such a negative connotation of the fact that politicians always have to be campaigning, but that's more of, that's a positive side of it that you don't hear very often, uh, because you're out there talking to the people and, and that's worth more about. I think when people hear campaigning constantly, it's usually more for the lobbyists and for other things like that, for the special interest groups.
And that's why I would say anybody who runs for office, I know there's, there's impatience, you know, so people try to, you know, their first office is running for Congress or running for, you know, senate or something like that. And I always say that when people ask me, how should I begin a political career? I always, you know, if you're in a incorporated area, start there, because that's where you really learn. You get passionate around, you get to hear people, you get to know people. And I think that, that was the thing that made me effective, because I started at a level where, you know, people used to see me in the grocery store and see me, you know, all the time. In fact, I'll tell you a little funny story. I mean, one time I was in the, in the store and I was doing some work at home and I was, you know, I was looking kind of dingy and I was in my sweatpants and all this kind of stuff. Somebody came up to me and it's like, you know, oh, look a little dingy there, huh, mayor? And, but, but that was, you know, that, that's the kind of, you know, thing that would happen. And they would, you know, say it jokingly, but it just, it, 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 that was, that was the kind of touch and that was the kind of relationship that I had with the residents. It wasn't a false relationship.
I got you. I guess, mayor of a small town, you were, you were really part of the town, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it different now? How different is it now as far as the money you have to raise?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's, it's a shame, because I think that what money does is some good people don't run because they're intimidated by the amount of money that you have to raise. So, you know, when you talk about, let's say, running for county executive or even when I ran for county council, you know, I got like a couple, ten thousand more dollars. That was okay, right? Uh, I think I raised maybe like forty thousand, but now you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, the raise. I mean, that's, and I, I have to tell you, the, for me, and ultimately, that's why I really got out, I hated asking for money. I just, you know, because it was just this kind of quick pro quo notion to it that I just, I just hated, you know. And, and so it's astronomical. And so if you don't have those connections to be able to raise the money, it, it just, it just takes so many people out of the game. That's why I am for public financing in some respects of campaigns, because, you know, in, in, in the end, I think it brings more people to the fray and, and, and get better ideas.
What would that do if it was, I don't, I don't fully understand how the financing or how the fundraising works. All I know is I get, I get tons of emails every-
Yeah, right.
Everyone asks me for money. What would it do if it was just public financing, would it?
So what public financing would say, there would be, you know, there, there would still be some money that you have to raise, but you wouldn't have to raise as much. So there'd be a threshold of how much you'd have to raise for public financing to kick in. But at least what I think it does is it would even the playing field, right? So the politics or someone who's attractive candidate or not attractive candidate wouldn't be so determined by money. And, and I think that's the, I think that's what we see today, that, oh, if somebody has six hundred thousand dollars and you only have two hundred thousand, oh, this person, oh, they're, they're gonna win because they got six hundred thousand dollars. And that's, that's not the case at all. And it shouldn't be the case. It should be based on ideas, on experience, on what you're bringing to the table. I think our politics is so run by money that it, it really brings in the kind of suspicion that you talked about earlier.
Right. Is there any, have they ever talked about limiting the amount of money you can spend on a campaign? Is that even?
Yeah, I think that's a good, and I think that's a good idea, you know, to say, okay, you know, you can only raise but so much, you know, so much money, right? I think anything that makes the, the process much more democratic, much more inclusive, even competitive. I mean, I didn't mind competitive races. You know, I put my, my ideas and experience on the table, just like anybody else. But when we get like third parties and other parties that get involved in campaigns and try to influence campaigns, I, I think that, that just gets away from exact, gets away from what we're trying to build as an inclusive democracy.
Right. It would seem like even maybe just, uh, you have to get a certain amount of signatures. I mean, how else do you represent the lower incomes? Because they don't have the money, so it's hard to-
Yeah, yeah, you know, and so, because I think they're great people out there and they have great ideas, but certainly, you know, they just don't have the infrastructure to wherewithal to sort of, you know, mount a credible campaign.
Right.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be.
A lot of laws get passed where you include certain groups and then it's easy to bring in the more powerful ones later on into the fray.
I think, no, I think that's absolutely right. I, yeah, I could tell you of all the offices that I've been in, been in, the, the one that I had, I think the most impact was being mayor. I loved being mayor and, and because again, it was, it was this tight-knit constituency that I knew I had to work with. And, and I was the first African American mayor. And so to sort of then begin to enliven a different sort of conversation around, you know, race and gender and identity and, and to be in a position of some, some authority around that was, was, was wonderful. I'll never forget it. And, and that a great time being mayor of Bladensburg.
Anything in particular, an accomplishment that you look back on proud of?
Yeah, um, we had our waterfront park. We have a waterfront park off the Anacostia River, which is one of the most, you know, is one of the dirtiest rivers in the United States. And unfortunately, and we worked very hard to really clean it up and to the help of park and planning and some pushing and nodding and arm twisting, we were able to get a really nice waterfront park where, you know, the matha and Elizabeth Seaton and other schools in the area started road teams. And, you know, we have a, we have a canoe. People can go canoeing. I wouldn't recommend fishing. But if you go down the Anacostia in between Bladensburg and before you get to DC, you're almost into like this forest area where you see the blue heron and turtles and things like that. And that to me, you know, every time I ride by that, that park, I mean, I just, you know, I just say, wow. And that's why I love being mayor. Again, you can get something done. You can envision it and get something done. And one of my most moving moments, when the park was finished and one Sunday morning, and I, I drove into the park and then to see this, you know, because it's an urban, you know, it's an urban river and to see this father playing with a boat with his son, that was just like very moving to me.
Nice, nice. That's a, it's a, outdoor space is so important.
Oh, it is. It is. Very important.
So what got you, what's the story from becoming the mayor to going into county council?
Yeah, you know, Prince George's County, you have term limits. And so, you know, there are these, what I would call eight-year political periods where like there's a slew of offices that are just open. And the then-county executive, Wayne Curry, you know, just called me and said, look, you know, I, I, I want you to run for county council. And, and we talked about it for a long time. And so I decided to run and I did win. You know, once you win the primary, that's the toughest part, win the primary, given, you know, then, then the general election is pretty easy.
What's the difference from, from the mayor to the county council?
Um, yeah, again, yeah, so instead of like in Bladensburg, I was representing like close to ten thousand. I mean, on the county council, I was, you know, representing like seventy thousand, right? And they're almost, so there's, think about, you know, there were ten different towns. It was like civic association and towns and what have you. And so the constituency is larger. Although, you know, I think that the county council, you can get a lot done. You know, for business, you can look at zoning issues, which I really became a student of. You had some nonprofit dollars and so you could give money to nonprofits. So I really, you know, I really enjoyed that, that part as well. And it's hard to sort of translate. What I found is I had, it was hard to translate what I did in the Senate, like legislation that I got passed to. Okay, so how did that influence your everyday life, right? You know, with, you know, like I could, when I was mayor, they could say, okay, if trash didn't get picked up, okay, I'm gonna get that trash picked up. Or like a day like today, make sure our plows are out there, you know, getting, getting, helping people out their homes, you know. On the county council, I have a larger level we're working with, let's say, the Department of Public Works. As a senator, you know, it's kind of like, okay, so what'd you do for me? And, and you, you know, and I find that the higher people go to office, they start making stuff up, you know. Oh, well, I sponsored this bill that helps you do this. I sponsored that bill. Where, like, you know, you were there and it's like, you know, where was this person? This person wasn't even part of the conversation.
Just put, just put your name on something and-
Yeah, you just put your name on something. Say, I sponsored that. I fought for that bill. And all it is really is that somebody will come along or the, the lead spots will come up. Hey, David, I'd like to have your name on this bill. Okay, this is, you know, that's it.
It's, I, from what I've heard, it's a lot of negotiations behind the scenes. If you get your name on this bill, then I'll help you push.
No, that's right. That's right. And, you know, party politics is obviously much more intense in the senate than it was on the county council and then being mayor, you know. So, you know, there, there were definitely side Republican and Democrats and, you know, there were times, yeah, you, you, you need the Republicans to get your bill passed and they would need you to get the bill passed. So, so there was that level, you know, of negotiation as, as well. But you're right, it was just all about negotiation. And getting, getting something done was very difficult, because a bill can almost die almost when you introduce it, right? Where in the county council, at least you knew that you would get a hearing, you know, and you would, you'd get out in the public. But, you know, you could write a piece of legislation that doesn't even get out to, what we used to say, get out the drawer. I mean, so, so it was tough.
I mean, there is, a piece of legislation is very complex. I mean, the amount of-
It is.
The lingo of it, like the understanding of it. And there's just so many moving parts.
I, I think that's a great way of putting it. And because what, what you're doing is, you're not, you're changing existing law, right? And so by changing the existing law, there were the reverberations that happened by changing that law, right? And so, especially when you try to make earth-moving legislation, you know, there's so many moving parts to it and everything that it's very, it's very hard to sometimes, you know, think that within a three-month period that you can get, you can, you can change, you know, legislation. And so sometimes it can take years. Like, when I, I did some environmental justice work and it took me years to get legislation done.
It, it sounds even harder to get that stuff done now, because somehow environmental has become such a political, it's wild.
Yeah, it is. It is. And you would think that common sense things, you know, would get by. I remember, you know, I put in the bill that I thought, oh, this makes a lot of sense. And, but you always have distractors and, and, you know, practically, I had to water down the bill so much that, because, you know, there was a constituency that was calling then, you know, my colleagues saying, you know, yeah, I know this sounds like good bill and yes, right, but it would cause us to do a lot more work and, you know, so please don't vote for this bill. And it wound up dying on the floor.
Right. It's gotta be hard to differentiate too, when you're hearing from these constituents, from the businesses or from the lobbyists, like, when they're, what's truth and what they're just saying, because it's gonna hurt their, their bottom line or?
No, when I, when my phone, you know, always, you know, talk about this, but one of my funniest moments in the senate was every, uh, every morning, you know, from Monday to Friday anyway, our offices were located several blocks away from where we would go to the senate gallery. And, and so I used to love to walk outside, because that would might be the only time I get to be outside, because then once you deal with the gallery work, you go right into committee. And so you're inside like all the time. So this would be the one time, you know, I get to go outside, maybe breathe some fresh air, you know, for the whole day. So I go outside and there would be all like these lobbyists on each side of the street, like stopping you, because lobbyists couldn't talk to you. Once you're in the gallery, they were prohibited from talking to you. So you'd be walking down the street, you know, and you're like, Senator Harrington, I counted on your vote. I can do this. Senator Harrington, you're not gonna vote for this. Here's why. You know, and you, you just get bombarded by these lobbyists, right? And, and so it was kind of funny, because I was always wondering, when I first became a senator, I always wondered, you know, well, I don't see many senators walking up the street, you know, because they used to go to the tunnel, right, to get to the gallery. But then I knew why, because you would just get, like, all the way up until literally you got to the two, like, they would try to stop you from walking into the gallery. Say, look, can I just get two seconds of your time? Can I, I just wonder if I have your vote, you know? And you'd just be plummeted with, with, you know, flyers and papers and things like that, so.
Right. It must work sometimes if they keep doing it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was the only way that, you know, besides, you know, staying up an appointment, you know, and you didn't like to meet with lobbyists alone, to be honest. I mean, you know, but, but yeah, I was sometimes the only contact that, you know, lobbyists would have with the legislature. And, you know, they, they, they would, they would work hard to get your attention, that's for sure.
What, do you have any thoughts or any solutions to the problems that we have with the influence of lobbyists, especially with the environment? And, and just pushing fake narratives and-
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, look, I tried to prime myself from, you know, being a, let's say, that studied, right? That really, you know, looked at the issues. And I have to say though, one of my disappointments is that, you know, many, many of my former colleagues and I, I suspect it's even today, would just rely on lobbyists for information, right? I think the key thing, people think that, that the power of lobbyists is in the dollar. And then there's some, you know, there's something to be said about that. But the power of lobbyists is that, you know, they have information and that, and when you're, but boy, when you have thousands of pieces of legislation, you know, that you gotta go through, you know, the lobbyist becomes a person who helps you shift through that, right? And, and if you're not doing your own homework, then they have, they have a lot more influence. Because that, their job is to create the relationship where they could say, okay, look, I'll talk to Harrington. I got a good relationship with Harrington, right? And, you know, they would try to bombard with their information and, but you gotta have, you, you also gotta have the knowledge base to push back sometimes. Because if you don't, then you, you'll just, you just get totally convinced by lobbyists and then find yourself in a place where you're making uninformed decisions.
Right. There's, there's just so many things you have to be an expert on. Like, it's a-
That's a good point. Yeah.
Hearings recently and it's just, uh, sometimes the legislation people get behind or that they're championing for, they're, like, you know anything about it, you realize they don't know anything and they're trying to act like they do or-
No, that's, that's absolutely right. And that's why you gotta pick, you know, when you're, when you're at that level, you know, I was in the state senate, but I can imagine it's true, being in the House of Representatives in the federal level or the, you know, senator, is that you gotta pick your core areas, right? You just can't like be an expert of everything, right? You gotta pick. So for me, it was the environment, it was health, it was equity, you know, around, you know, wealth. And that's, that's where, you know, go to your other question. That's how I, I felt the chamber was a good sort of landing spot for me, because I felt I could look at, you know, small business equity. So I became very familiar with those issues. And others, you just, you know, you, you rely on colleagues. I, I served with Jamie Raskin. And so, you know, I would, Jamie and I, Jamie sat a few seats away from me. So on constitutional issues and other things, you know, I would say, Jamie, what do you think? You know, what should, what should I be doing here? He'd like say, well, you know, here's, here's, here's I want you, you know, here's I want you to do. And Jamie might ask me, hey, I see this environmental justice. What, what are you thinking? You know, so there's a lot of like, so this, you go to people who you know are the experts and then, you know, who you trust and, you know, you go.
Got you. So what was one of your, what, what's one thing you passed as a county council member that you're really proud of? And you're not allowed to say the pawn shop stuff. By the way, anyone out there, my dad, if my dad's watching this, they passed a bunch of laws against the pawn shops.
Yeah, yeah.
We've moved on past it. We've actually got-
Yeah, we, yeah, we, but, uh, no, I think one of, one of the things I was, I was most proud of in terms of legislation was that I put in a wellness zone. So I created, I literally drafted a zone that would allow communities to look at improving their built environment for the sake of then making people healthier, right? So, you know, if you're gonna put aside work, walks, put in bike paths, make communities more walkable, provide grants so that, you know, healthier grocery stores move into communities, because what we see in particularly in low-income communities, lack of access to healthier foods and, and parks and what have you, really are more, are higher contributors to ill health than access to, you know, a doctor. And so that was one of the things, and that's even, even in today, where, you know, there, there's a wellness component in the, in the zoning of Prince George's County, which, you know, I drafted.
Okay. I mean, you know, I, I live out in Rockville, Bethesda area and then I have a giant behind me at one of my stores. But, you know, walking to that giant, walking to my giant here, it's very different. I mean, just the foods that are offered and, and it's, it's a very different, different thing.
Disparities of what's offered between low-income communities, what's being offered, you know, you know, the, the first thing that when you walk into some of the, you know, grocery stores, as you see, you know, the packaged food and the processed food. And so what I'd want to do is provide businesses with incentives to sort of do the kinds of things that would display healthier foods much more prominently than the processed foods. So, you know, it's in the, you know, and that's why I'm in the, again, you know, instead of passing laws, you know, sometimes the regulations, I think that what incentives can we provide businesses that may help, you know, people, you know, to live, you know, healthier, optimum lives?
Right. That's a, that's a good way to go about it, because sometimes it's definitely too many, too many regulations and rules and that's, I, that actually agrees with me. that's, I, uh, that actually brings me to another question. Cause so often you're judged by how many new regulations and rules you pass. It's, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, you know, and that's one of the challenges I think we have now, that I have with the legislative now, it's that, you know, I had a conversation with, uh, some advocates that wanna really do some things that I think will hurt business. And I said, well, why are you passing a law? Like shouldn't the government be doing this already, right? Like one of them was, you know, well, make sure that there's safe places with, with workers, you know, you know, workers, you know, work. And, um, I said, well, don't you have a department of, of, of commerce and a department of permitting and, and department of inspections that already do that, right? And so put in legislation to deal with the few bad actors instead of recognizing that mostly actors are, are really good and trying to help and trying to do the right thing, particularly in this pandemic. And you get this legislation like, okay, so you're gonna hurt, you're gonna hurt the very thing that we need to keep that going on. And that's business.
Right. So that's moving on to, so now you're, you're this, the president of the Prince George's County Chamber of Commerce, which you've completely turned around since.
Oh, thank you.
Inside there. Yeah, it's been amazing to see, to see it grow and what it's turned into. Uh, but is it, and your wife owns a bakery now. Essentially a small business owner, your wife is.
I hear it every day, Michael, you know? I hear it every day.
So did she, did she open today with the storm or is, was that a debate?
I don't know. Um, you know, I, I, I hear around the house right now. I've had a chance to, you know, talk to her, you know, cause, uh, she usually opens today like in the afternoon.
Okay.
You know, with this kind of storm with ice and stuff, I'm gonna see, see, see what she's gonna do.
Yeah, it was a lot of phone calls back and forth with my employees today. I wanted to make sure they're safe, but you wanna open. It's, it's, it's such a balance. But how, how, how has running the chamber and owning your own small business changed your opinion maybe of regulations or changed your opinion of what a, what a small business?
No, that, that's a great question. And it, it's really changed it a lot because I see firsthand what my wife goes through, right? You know, getting her permits, getting her health, you know, having health, having WSSC, you know, the water people come in, you know, having, having to pay her quarterly taxes, you know, have to work with, you know, making sure that she's in good standing, you know? And I, and, and I even help her with some of this. Cause you know, she's, you know, she, she has, she's a small business owner, you know, doesn't have a lot of staff. So it doesn't like, she has all the time in the world to sort of comply with these regulations. And it's, it's made me a lot more sensitive around, um, all the, all the hurdles that we have to go through just to be a small business. And, um, and we, we have to, so being in the chamber at this point in my life is actually a, a, a great sort of point, you know, that, you know, my wife has a business. And like I said, I hear it every day. She, you know, as you know, you have business, so you're passionate about it, right? It's not, it's not a, just a activity. It is, it is your baby. And, and to hear her and hearing things that she has to go through and hearing things she has to wait for, this made me much more, it made, ma- made me much more, um, sensitive around than being, being the presidency or the chamber to help protect small business. Cause it's really small business. It's not, you know, the giant stores, but it's really small business where people get their start in the workplace, right? Really understand the values and mores and ethos of being in the workplace. And, um, you hire, you know, you, you, you know, you, you bring people on and, and, um, what is it? Seventy percent of our workforce work in small business, right?
Is it that high? Wow.
It, so it's high, you know, it's not, it's not, we think, we might think it's the corporations or what have you, no, it's small business. And to the extent that we, uh, stunt the growth of small businesses, we do it at our peril. So you have been to the chamber, having a small business, at least in my family, um, talking to people like you, you know, and hearing you, I just think, you know, we've got to do, and it's, it's not gonna happen through just passing regulation after regulation after regulation. It's not, it's, 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 it's gonna happen. We're creating a partnership of businesses to say, okay, look, how do we help you grow, right? Uh, I, I just tell you a funny, quick story. I was on, there's a bill that's coming out. And I was talking to the proponents of that bill, which I think would be harmful to small business. And one of the proponents, you know, I, I was, you know, pushing back on some of their arguments. And then they were, they were agreeing to, they were open to it. And one of the proponents said, well, you know, you got some people where, uh, they're doing really well during this pandemic. And CEOs are just capturing then all the, you know, they're, they're making, you know, millions of dollars, you know, in their salaries and not helping business. And I said, well, let me tell you something. I don't know of a business from, you know, MGM to that is not living on the margins right now. And maybe, maybe there's a two percent, three percent margin at best, uh, you know? You're, if you're CEO of a business right now, you're not, you're not raking in the cash right now, you know? You're barely keeping your operations open, you know, certainly paying yourself a salary. But, you know, I mean, it's not like, um, you know, oh, okay, let me go buy the, you know, let me go buy the Cadillac now, you know, it's just, it's not happening. You know, but it's just, it's this warped view that we have of business, that we just think that, well, we gotta constantly, you know, monitor them and keep an eye on them. And I, I just think that that, that is a mistaken view. And if we continue down that road, then, um, even if we come out of this pandemic, we're gonna be at a place where business is gonna be so different that the job, the job numbers are still not gonna look, you know, the same.
So anyone going into politics, what's some, what's some good advice that you can give them if they're just starting and they're?
I, I, I would always say that, um, start at the lowest level. You know, again, if you're, if you're, if you live in a, uh, an area that is incorporated and has a town structure like a mayor or, you know, a city council, whatever, you like, start there, right? Um, cause there you can make mistakes and it's not as, you know, so apparent. So start, start there. Um, and start with a purpose, you know, it's not just about, um, whether or not you get into a variety. It's, it's, it's about that you, you are being introduced and creating relationships that can amass certain level of skills. There's nothing wrong with, there's nothing wrong with ambition. I don't, you know, I don't think ambition is bad, but it's how, where, where that ambition leads and, and, you know? And the third thing I would say is, um, make sure you talk to your family about it because it can be very taxing. I think the biggest mistake I made when I ran for mayor is that, you know, um, my wife and I didn't have a conversation, right? And, and it took on a lot more than I thought it was going to, you know, late night meetings and, um, weekend commitments. You know, my, my, my sons who are grown now talk about, yeah, I remember when daddy used to drag us to these meetings, you know? So make sure that your family is included in it in a way where, you know, they, they, they can endorse it. And, um, you set some expectations around family time and also being out in the community.
Got you. Um, I, I think, uh, I think I'm, I think I've asked you enough questions and kept enough of your time. I, I really appreciate you doing this, David.
No, thank you. Thank you for this. I really appreciate it, Michael. And keep up the great work. This is, this is important. And, uh, so, uh, glad to be a part of it.